Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:02 PM, and I will now call the April 17th meeting of the Administration, Budget and Finance Committee of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. The next agenda item is roll call of members and determination of quorum. Counselor Crone. Oh, I do it, don't I? Counselor Jennings, Counselor Freeman, Counselor Mazur.
Here.
And we do have a quorum tonight. Let the record reflect that there are four counselors present on this committee, and we have a quorum of committee. The meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Copies of the agenda are located at the back of the meeting room. The next agenda item is unfinished business. The first is proposal number 224. Proposal number 224, 22024, is an ordinance of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, reestablishing the cumulative, there we go, capital development fund and increasing the cumulative capital development tax rate. At the April 15th? First, was it first? Okay, I'm sorry. First 2024 council meeting, the proposal was referred to this committee for consideration and recommendations. Before we ask our committee members if they have questions regarding this proposal, I would like to ask Oscar Gutierrez to please come up to the podium and just in the most layman's of terms, explain what this proposal is. We do have community members here, and I want to make, is that okay?
I would defer to you, counsel, to cover that, and then I'll cover the financial piece. Would that be acceptable?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Jacob McClellan with Bose McKinnon Evans. So, this ordinance establishes, well, it establishes a rate, I think you guys already have a cumulative capital development fund, but it establishes a rate, a tax rate, for that fund. The proceeds or the amounts that would be levied and deposited into that fund can be used for general capital improvements for the city, and it would establish a rate of five cents per hundred dollars for that fund. And I think the idea is to provide additional funds for capital items for the city. And then it ties into the other two ordinances. If you want me to talk about those maybe high level, kind of as they relate, is that okay?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, so the other ordinance is, the main ordinance is for general obligation bonds, and the proceeds of those bonds would be used to refund some equipment leases that you all have, and then to finance some capital needs. The cumulative capital development fund, the funds levied and deposited of that fund could be used for capital items related to those projects or for debt service on those bonds. And then the last ordinance that kind of ties into those is just the appropriation ordinance, and that appropriates the proceeds of those bonds into your budget. But I think they, if there's questions on kind of the process, I'm happy to answer those, but maybe, I don't know, Oscar, if you have info to kind of tie it together on the financial side. Can you guys hear, okay?
I don't think their mic's on.
Microphone's on.
I don't think mine's on either.
Not on.
First one or second one?
The one with the white tags. Over, the brown, the brown.
This?
There you go.
Does it work now?
Do the other one, too.
Both of them.
There you go.
Hey.
One thing before I turn it over to Oscar, I was going to say that, yeah, I can hear it now.
Me, too.
Now, better. The timing for the CUMCAP fund is such that there's a deadline to get that into DLGF by the end of the month, and so that one, if you guys want to proceed with that, that's one that we do really have to stick with a timeline on, because if not, it then would bounce to being able to be, you know, levied for the next year if you guys decided to proceed with it. I think, you know, if you needed to take time to think about the bonds, I think there's a little bit of time there, although I'm sure the city wants their, you know, wants funds for their capital items, too. Oscar.
Thank you, Jacob, for the record. Oscar Gutierrez, bond reconsulting, municipal advisor to a transaction. I brought a packet of information for you, and I'd like to take a moment to go through that information to ensure that we understand how everything ties together. The first one that I will point you to is the one that is titled "City of Lawrence," and it has the tax payable, tax rates, and the net assessed value. It's, look up here, and I don't know if we can project these for the public or not, but we can make it available online for the public. Obviously, it's information that is public. If you will notice, in 2019, the tax rate was 78.7867, and it progressively declined year over year, primarily due to the net assessed value of the city going up, but also because there was a tax rate management. I would argue that most school systems have a tax rate management, and they try to maintain their tax rate, and a lot of second-class cities have a tax rate management where they try to draw the line on a tax rate, and they try to maintain it and not let it drop, because the way that the state allows you to grow your operating budget, when I mean operating budget, that is your general fund, and you can only use that, you know, for operations, salaries, so forth, and the state caps by how much you can grow. So, for example, last year, it was capped at 5%, 4% or 5%, it's usually 4% or 5%. And the inflation rate's at 8%, so a city can't even keep up with inflation by growing it by that much. So, the CUMCAP fund is a fund that can be used for capital needs, vehicles, buildings, maintenance. It can be used for salaries, it can be used for other, like, health.
You're saying it can or cannot be used for salaries?
It cannot be.
Yeah.
It is strictly for equipment, capital needs, so anything that's depreciable. This fund lives outside of that maximum, and they allow you to do it by that .05. And currently, the rate in Lawrence is at half of that. So, if you go to the page that has multiple tables with RW Baird at the bottom right-hand corner, the third line, or the second line, I'm sorry, under category, CUMCAP Development Fund, in 2024, you're receiving $553,000 that you can use towards capital. By increasing this, you'll increase the amount coming to the city by doubling it, and because the AV will go up, and we're assuming that will go up slightly, we're expecting it to be roughly $1.1 million next year. Now, as Jacob explained, yes, sir?
Now, when you say increasing it, you're talking about the Lawrence's piece of the pie of taxes that are split up between the school systems, Marion County, is that right?
I'll get to that piece in a second. So, this is the amount that, so the council can only control your levy. So, you guys currently, if you go back to the previous page, you guys are at 69.88.
Yes.
That is your piece of the pie. So, 69 cents, however, your residents are paying a tax rate of $2.57. So, it is a small, you know, it's not a significant portion, but it's definitely not even half of, you know, not never close. So, you can only control your portion of the pie, which is currently 69 cents.
Who else has, who else has the rest of the 2.57? Who else does it?
It just doesn't exist. So, this is what you guys are imposing on, this is what you guys say, our tax rate will go up, that gets put against a value of the properties, and then you guys collect it. So, you can only collect what is levied upon, and I will get to how that impacts each resident here in a second, and let me tie it all together. So, CUMCAP fund will go from $500,000 to $1.1 million because the tax rate of Lawrence will go up by that .025, and that lives outside of the maximum that the state imposes. So, that is additional dollars that the city will be able to use towards capital needs. I don't know how far back this has been a practice of the city, but the city has been paying for capital needs out of their operating budget, meaning that instead of paying for salaries of public safety, they're paying for vehicles for public safety. This would alleviate that.
Yeah.
And that is specific to the CUMCAP fund. The next piece on here is the debt service, because the city currently has a large number of leases, or vehicles primarily, that are being paid. We're going to still pay for those, but currently, instead of paying for them out of the operating budget, we're going to create a new line, a property tax line, which will raise the levy that the city imposes, the pie, on residents. So, it'll look like a tax increase, and the way that we backed into that is that the administration would like to see it go back to what it was in 2019. Now, I don't, you know, this is not to relitigate previous administrations or previous councils, but it is my understanding that there was a clashing of governmental entities.
You could say that.
And that caused the management to go down, and there was just no management, so you can see that, that's when it started to kind of go down, and ultimately, for the city to receive less money for operations. So, that would take out the existing, yes, ma'am.
So, when was the last tax rate increase?
I wouldn't.
Who would know that?
There, well, there was, if you look at the tax rates, I can tell you from 19 to 24. In 2019, it was 78 cents. In 2020, it dropped to 74, then it went back up to 77, then back down to 72, then way down to 67, and then slightly back up to 69. So, I wouldn't, so there were some increases along the way, as you can tell, between 2020 and 2021, there was, you know, you can consider that an increase, and then it went back down again, but I think that this is mainly just, it wasn't being managed because of the sporadicness of it all. But I can't speak for the previous advisors, council, or administration, so I'm making the assumption that it just wasn't a managed item. So, the bond, we are going to refinance the equipment that is currently being paid out of the operating fund. That's going to free up those dollars, again, to use towards operations, and that could be road maintenance, parks, salaries, and put those into its own line that will come out of that property tax levy. So, at the last meeting, the question was asked of how does this impact residents? If you turn over the page that has the tax rates, when Mitch Daniels was governor, he, it's the back of the page that has the tax rates, so he put a tax cap on individual properties, so homestead residences at 1%, rentals at 2%, and businesses at 3. And there's, I'm oversimplifying it, obviously, there's more nuance than that, but what this body has primarily been concerned is about the residents of Lawrence. And I can, and that has the calculations that shows that in Lawrence, the average household, I didn't put the median value, but everybody over $120,000 is already at the tax caps, meaning that if your, their whole house is 120,000, the most that they're paying is $1,200. Now, that is net of referendum, and I don't, you know, out of respect to Dr. Smith and the schools, I don't want to litigate the merits of, and merits of referendums, but for property taxes outside of referendum, houses of 120,000 and above are at the maximum that they will be paying. So, if your house is worth under 120,000, you may see an increase, and we benchmark what that would be for households on our sheet, and it would go, it would roughly be for, if your household is $100,000, which is kind of like the floor where we put it, they would see a $30 increase for the year. If you're at 120,000, there would be the cap, and anything, and then with 150, 207, which I believe the 207,000 is the median household income, that's, I'm looking at my notes here. So, the average household in Lawrence is at $207,000, meaning that the average household is already at the tax cap. So, this would impact your Walmarts, your, you know, type of businesses, that would be the ones paying into these improvements. There were questions around over seniors, and the county defines seniors at 65-plus, and I put an informational sheet, this is directly from the county's website. I put the reference there, and again, these documents could be uploaded to the public. I'm happy to, I mean, I think it's good information for the public to have, and it lists the two types of programs that exist for seniors. Those programs, one of them has a home value cap of 240,000, and then the second one has a value cap of $200,000, and there's also an income requirement on both these. I'm not going to read off the county's property tax plans, or programs, I mean, but I did make them available to you for your residents that are inquiring about that, because even if they are at the tax cap, there is relief through the county. And I'll leave you with this. Last year, the legislature passed a law that was good for three years, so we're in the first of three years, that allows individuals 55 years or older to have a similar program, but I don't believe Marion County participated in the program. St. Joe's did participate. I reached out to the county auditor today, and we played phone tag and didn't get a chance to receive the information, but I'll make that available to you in case that is something that the county decides to implement for 55-plus residents. But with that, I kind of gave a high-level overview. I'm happy to dig into any of the numbers, but I think that the biggest concern here was around residents, and I would say that if you're living in a homestead under 120,000, they will see some impact, and at $100,000, it's $30. And if it's below that, I don't think that there's many of those, but there could be, and they could see an increase.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez, I appreciate that.
I do have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we're getting, I understand, we're getting, we're increasing our share of the overall pie.
Yes, so, so the way that it works is circuit breaker, if you, they call it a pie, because all the units say how much money they need to run operations. City of Lawrence was saying 69 cents was their piece. The school is X, the township is Y, the library, the county, and so forth, and when you add them all together, that's where you get the two.
57.
And I get that point. My question for you, my question for you is, at the higher piece of pie, that we get, higher rate rather, what is the potential downside to that?
And I'm getting that, so if you look at, for example, the, let's just take on the household impact for taxpayers, and we look at example three or four, which are a little bit larger numbers, let's just look at example four, because that's a $500, where you see the tax, circuit breaker credit. What the, what the county is saying to, what all the units are saying to that taxpayer of $207,000 is that your tax bill should be $2,661 in 2024, but because of, they're at the cap, the county doesn't collect $591 that are needed amongst all the units. So, that is a gap, and that becomes money that doesn't go to all the units. By doing this, the circuit breaker will grow and, or will grow amongst all the units, and that money that doesn't get collected, it won't be a dollar for dollar to Lawrence. So, for example, if you're collecting a million dollars, you're not going to get hit with a million dollars' worth of gap on your budget. It will be spread amongst all the units, and there's a formula for that, and you will ultimately get hit with circuit breaker, and the circuit breaker impact does come back. So, you are levying above the circuit breaker, so you're not going to collect additional dollars that everybody's asking for, but that lack of collection will spread amongst, be spread amongst all the units. So, to answer your question is, yes, you're taking a bigger piece of the pie by spreading, by collecting more, and the gap being spread amongst everybody else. So, it's not a direct bigger pie, it's just, you're collecting more, but because your taxpayers are not paying the full amount, it's just that lack of collections is going to get spread amongst everybody. So, you're getting more money, and everybody else is going to get a little bit of a hit. It's kind of a shell game, and that's the bad part of property tax caps, because the, all the units need more money than they can collect because everybody's at that 1% cap. So, if you're in a heavily residential community, like, and Lawrence is kind of a mix of that, it does impact circuit breaker. But Marion County can absorb a large part of that because it's Marion County.
Right.
Did that answer it? It's a, circuit breaker's a little convoluted, but it's just a gap of what needs to be collected, and it doesn't get collected.
Yeah, that makes, makes a little more sense in a certain way, but I'm overthinking it, too.
It's just, there's going to be less money collected, and that less money collected is going to be spread amongst everybody, so.
Right, right.
So, you're asking for more, and then everybody's going to get just a little bit less.
Right.
That's the best way I can explain it. Mitch Daniels, I don't think intended for that to happen, I would, I would hope, but it was the result of it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you, sir.
So, if you want me to touch maybe on the timing, just overall, if that's helpful? So, assuming you all make a recommendation for this, and assuming you would make a recommendation for the GO bonds and the appropriation ordinance, at your May 6th meeting, tentatively, we have you guys scheduled to hold public hearings, so you'd take public comment on the fund, the adoption of the ordinance related to the fund, and then you, when you do a GO bond, and you're going to appropriate those, the funds of those bonds into your budget, you have to take a public hearing, and it's essentially a public hearing on the GO bond as well. Assuming everything was adopted May 6th, we would have to put out a few notices to the public. There's a 30-day remonstrance period on the CCD fund, and we would have everything filed with DLGF by the end of May, by their deadline. Remonstrance period on the CCD ordinance would pass around June 9th. We would, potentially, we'd be pricing on the bonds right around, let's see, May 23rd for the GO bonds with a bond closing the week of June 3rd, or, I'm sorry, closing documents prepared the week of June 3rd with, with bond proceeds, funds available for the projects around June 12th, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions, counselors? Is that a no? Okay, yeah. Then we will need to consider a motion to give a favorable recommendation, unfavorable recommendation, or no recommendation to council. Do we have a motion?
So, moved?
Second.
Is it favorable?
Favorable.
Favorable, okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Counselor Freeman. Is there any further discussion? We will now proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item is proposal number three, 2024. An ordinance of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of local municipal improvement projects within the city and effect the current refunding of various equipment lease financing obligations of the city, providing for the payment of such bonds from ad valorem taxes to be levied upon all of the taxable property located in the city to the extent not paid from general revenues of the city legally available for such purposes, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith. At the April 15th, 2024 council meeting, this proposal was referred to this committee for consideration and recommendations, and here we are. Do we have any committee members with questions, or could I please have, sorry, may I please have?
Sure. Jacob again with Bose McKinnon Evans. So, this ordinance authorizes general obligation bonds, and I think you guys went over maybe at your meeting on Monday kind of structure. So, GO bonds are direct obligations of the city, not issued through a building corporation or anything like that, so it's a direct obligation of the city payable from property taxes. The ordinance authorizes bonds in an amount of not to exceed $7 million, with a term of not to exceed 20 years, and a rate of not to exceed 5%. It authorizes a form of continuing disclosure agreement, that's, there's a website, when bonds are sold in the open market through underwriters, where your dissemination agent posts your financials for investors so that they can kind of keep track on, you know, Lawrence obligations, and so that's what that is. It authorizes a purchase agreement for the sale of the bonds, an escrow agreement, I should mention, or I did mention that the proceeds of the bonds, it authorizes those to be used for the refinancing of those equipment leases that you all have in place, a number of the equipment leases with Regions Bank, and for a project for some capital improvements. I think the project is, let's see here, municipal, sorry, public safety vehicles and parks, garage, street vehicles for use by the city, and any necessary related equipment in connection therewith, and any other necessary municipal capital improvements to city facilities. And then as far as authorization, it's, it's the authorization essentially for all the steps for the sale of the bonds, and again, assuming you guys make a recommendation tonight, there'll be a notice out in the paper related to the appropriation of the proceeds, and if you guys stuck with our planning calendar, it would be a public hearing related to the appropriation of the bond proceeds and final adoption on May 6th. During that time, bondry would work with the underwriter on marketing the bonds. Following the May 6th meeting, we'd have to put out a few public notices. We would anticipate a bond sale, I think I said it's around the end of We would anticipate a bond sale, I think I said it's around the end of May, with funds available and closing on the bonds June the 12th. So with that, I mean, I know these tied together and kind of talked about them a little bit more last time as well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions or, and I think Oscar covered the financial aspects, but.
Right.
Is it 7 million or 7 and 1/2 million?
Did I say, let me double check here. It's, the bonds are not to exceed 7 million.
Okay.
Yeah, it, yeah, I think there's, yeah, they're anticipating not issuing more than five, but that's for flexibility.
I will note that when we first brought this and I spoke at the council meeting a month ago, we had benchmarked everything around a 75 cent number. And then after discussion between the council and administration, they, the decision was to do 2019 rate, which was slightly higher. That will open up the opportunity for a future project for the city. So the way we'll accomplish that, and it's important for this body to know that, is that the 2025 payment will be higher than the subsequent payments. So that when the administration and the council decide that they would like to do a project, whether it be roads, amphitheater, whatever, maybe, I don't, it could be anything, that you will not be, you won't have to go through this tax, it will be, you'll be able to hit that 78 cent mark and not have any impact. So then you can say, we're going to maintain the 78 cents for the subsequent years. So you'll be able to either do a smaller project, a large project. And that decision, obviously, is still early on, but it will be something that you'll have the option to do a project in the future. And depending on how big or small, we can give you guys parameters on what that will look like. But that's why we put seven and a half, but we're only going to do five, have a larger payment in 2025. And then you'll have the ability to do other projects that you guys can come together with the administration and figure out the priority.
Councilman, or Councilor Missouri, you had a question regarding this?
I'm just looking.
Okay.
My figures.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else, do the councilors?
Is this proposal on a timeline that we, that we need to address ASAP or anything like that? Can we hold it for maybe one more meeting, even in committee, so we can get a better understanding?
Can request that, yes.
Yeah, the cume cap is the one that has a deadline. The, I mean, the bond ordinance, I mean, I think there's, you know, probably a need to expend proceeds on those capital items, but there's not a deadline that there is.
Okay.
So. Anything else?
The cume cap, you're just creating the authority to levy against it. You won't actually do that until you do a budget. So you can create it, allow it to be up to that 0.05, and come budget time, decide that you don't want to levy against it. So this is just creating it. And the deadline to create it is, I believe they moved it to May. But.
Yeah, we have to file the approval and we have to have our notice go out before the end of May on the cume cap. But you guys have already recommended that one. But yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So just to clarify, because the GO bond ordinance is going to be considered in concert with the appropriation ordinance, which is next, there's also a public hearing component to the appropriation ordinance. Do we have any issues with noticing that for the May 6 meeting that we would need to address for the appropriation public hearing?
Yeah, I think we would, we would probably want to re-notice that for whatever meeting you guys will consider the final adopt. And it does know, I mean, if it, if somebody showed up and said, hey, we were here for the appropriate, you'd say, we've, we've tabled that or we've pushed that off to the next meeting. So, yeah, we'll just, we'll communicate with you, Scott. And whenever you guys tell us if you're going to consider it, we'll, we'll want to get notice out.
Sure. Thanks.
All right, so if we are requesting this to stay in committee, then just say, we will consideration tonight to a future. Consideration, okay. So we have a table consideration tonight for future motion.
So the appropriate motion, if it's the will of the committee, would be a motion to table consideration on this proposal to a future committee meeting to be determined.
So moved.
I'll second.
Fantastic. Thank you, councilors. Any further discussion? And then we vote on that?
The motion table.
Oh, okay. Okay, we will now vote on a motion to table. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Okey doke. The vote is unanimous to table this motion, or to table this. Thank you. Our next agenda item is proposal number four, 2024. Appropriation ordinance, city of Lawrence, Indiana, general obligation refunding and improvement bonds. At the April 15, 2024 council meeting, this proposal was referred to this committee for consideration and recommendations. And, Jacob, please.
So if you're going to table the GO bond ordinance, you've, you know, this one would probably go along with it.
Along with it, right.
I'm happy to answer any questions about it. But again, when you, when you have your budget process, there's, there's a chance for public comment, public hearings. And so that's what this is. It just gives the public a chance to comment on the appropriation of the bond proceeds. So you would do this, you know, in concert with adopting the bond ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So, another motion to table, okay. So then we will move right along to, for another motion to table this. We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
So moved for a motion?
Yes. I jumped, I jumped too far ahead. My apologies.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jennings. Okay, any further discussion? We will now proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Okay, the vote is unanimous. Thank you, councilors. And next on the agenda item is new business. We have none. The next agenda item is ratification of contracts. At the April 15 council meeting, various contracts were referred to this committee for consideration and recommendations. I understand that Deputy Chief of Staff Level will be presenting these contracts this evening. Mr. Level?
Hello, councilors. So as I mentioned Monday, there are four contracts that have been referred to this committee. Three of those are related to the bond that transaction that the administration is requesting for the council. Majority of those funds and those contracts will be paid through the proceeds of the bond. And with the exception that Oscar Gutierrez and Bondry, portion of that is, will be under professional services, particularly for his municipal advising and with the cume cap information he's provided to the council. But then the bond work, this more additional work he'll be doing with the bond will be paid from those proceeds. And then Santi Solutions, I mentioned before, is our IT service here for the city. During the transition of the administration end of last year, it was a yearly contract. But now it went on a month-to-month contract until we agreed, went to in a yearly contract, which is already budgeted for. And so, yes, any other questions, I'd be happy to address. Baird, Boz, and Bondry.
Bondry.
In Santi, excuse me, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No questions, no comments? Do we just move right along? Okay. So we will need a motion, we need to consider a motion to give a favorable recommendation, unfavorable recommendation, or no recommendations to the council for each of these contracts. We will start with Robert W. Baird Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
Do a motion to recommend?
Okay, doke. Thank you, Councilor Jennings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Freeman.
Just to confirm, that's recommending a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Sorry. Is there any further discussion? We will proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The vote is unanimous. Thank you, councilors. The next contract up is Santi Solutions for IT. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And again, just to confirm, a motion for a favorable recommendation.
For a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Missouri, for favorable as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Thank you, councilors. The vote is unanimous. Favorable. Next is the Boz McKinney and Evans contract. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for favorable.
Thank you, Councilor Jennings.
I will second.
Favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you, Councilor Missouri. Is there any further discussion? We will proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The vote is unanimous favorably. Thank you, councilors. And the final contract is Bondry Consulting. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for favorable.
Thank you, Councilor Jennings. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Freeman. Any further discussion? We will now proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Another unanimous vote. Thank you, councilors. The next, the next agenda item is other business. Is there any other business for this committee this evening? Okey doke. Thank you so much. We are adjourned.